Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington. I would like to call to order the Everett City Council meeting of August 9th, 2023. The city council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Public Meetings Act. Community members are welcome to join either in person, remote via Zoom, or by calling in. For those who wish to participate in a future meeting on Zoom, you'll find the instructions to register for public comment on the City of Everett website under the City Council Department. Please note, we do not allow comments on any kind of campaigning, whether for or against ballot measures or candidates running for office. We also do not accept comments focused on personal matters that are unrelated to city business. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mayor Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
Councilmember Schwab?
Here.
Councilmember Fosse?
Here.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Here.
Councilmember Vogel?
Here.
Vice President Tuie?
Here.
President Stonecifer?
Here.
And Councilmembers Arlingo, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Fosse, would you please read the land acknowledgement?
The city council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Shtehobes people and their successors, the Tleilip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the August 2nd meeting?
Councilmember Ryan moves approval of the August 2nd minutes.
Seconded.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Vice President Tuie?
Abstained.
President Stonecifer?
Yes.
And good evening, Mayor Franklin.
Yeah, good evening, Council President, and just thank you all for allowing me to take a couple of weeks off. It was very restorative, and I'm rested and ready to, for the next few months of our busy, busy summer. I was in beautiful islands of Hawaii, and I would ask that we all keep them in our thoughts and prayers as they are under fire right now as Hurricane Dora. There's multiple fire, wildfires throughout the Hawaiian Islands, so anyone with family and friends and loved ones there, just keep them in your thoughts and prayers. First, I wanted to say congratulations to the Everett Housing Authority. I joined multiple colleagues up here at the grand opening of the Madrona Square project. Councilmember Vogel was there, Councilmember Ryan, Councilmember Fosse, and Vice President Tuie. And just, it's a project that's been a long, long time coming. I think they kicked it off in 2017, and it's going to house 67 families, low-income housing families that are, many of the kids will be attending Hawthorne Elementary. Just great to see that project up, and really appreciate the council's strong support of that work. I also appreciate the tough decision you guys all made last week on the Waits Motel. I know it's hard to make those types of decisions, but I can promise you that our team will be working hard to ensure that the folks that are living there are taken care of and they are rehoused safely and successfully, and that we together work to put that property into very productive and safe use in the future for the City of Everett. It's been challenging for us for decades, and grateful that you all had the courage to do that work, and we'll be working with our community development department and our legal department to ensure, and I'll keep you posted on the work that we have ahead of us moving forward. And also, just want to thank Council President Stonecifer. We've got a few guests coming this month. I think the courts, our judges are coming forward to talk about our diversion programs, our therapeutic courts, such an important topic, as well as the work that's happening in our jails to provide treatment and support to those that are in the criminal justice system that are, that need some Suboxone or other treatment options while they're going through that process, and I think it's going to be a great update for all of us. So appreciate the work you've been doing to bring them forward. And then, with that, I would like to welcome Chief Templeman forward to swear in our newest officer.
Great, thank you very much, Mayor Franklin, and good evening, Councilmembers. Dan Templeman with the Police Department, and it is my honor tonight to be able to introduce to you our most recent graduate from the Basic Law Enforcement Academy, Logan Richard. Logan was born in Renton, where he lived until he was 10 years old, and at that time his family moved to Sammamish. Logan graduated from Skyline High School in 2017, where he played lacrosse, ran track, and worked at the local YMCA as a lifeguard and a swim instructor. In 2022, Logan graduated from Western Washington University with a degree in Business Operations and Administrative Management. Logan decided to pursue law enforcement because he wanted a career that he could be proud of and one that would challenge him to become better every day. After meeting with a couple of agencies, the Everett Police Department stood out to Logan. He was welcomed with professionalism and excitement, and those he met were kind, confident, and passionate about the job in the city they worked for. Logan graduated from the Basic Law Enforcement Academy on July 27th, and he looks forward to continuing his learning from his colleagues, the department leadership in the community, to become a well-rounded and confident police officer. In his spare time, Logan enjoys frequenting local shops, restaurants with his fiancee, reading comic books, and watching the newest movie releases. As always, had the opportunity to meet with a group of his family that are here tonight to support him, and always like to reiterate the importance of family and that support network for our newest police officers. And Logan is no different than the majority of all of our officers in that he's got a really good support system around him and one that he's going to need to lean on through the next 20 to hopefully 30 years with the Everett Police Department. So I present to you Logan Richard for swearing in. Thank you.
And do I hear a motion to accept Logan Richard as the newest member of the Everett Police Department?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Vice President Tuie?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes.
So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Logan Richard.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
Or a lawful permanent resident.
Or a lawful permanent resident.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the State of Washington.
Of the State of Washington.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Everett.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Everett.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer.
Perform the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Here's one. Any injuries?
It's been good so far.
Thank you. And congratulations. And with that, Council President, no further comment. Thank you. And we'll now move on to our public comment time period. Angie, do we have anyone signed up to speak for public comment this evening?
We do. We have one individual online and two individuals in chambers. First, we did receive a couple of written comments, one from Bob and Jean Wool regarding the Waits Motel, and then 11 anonymous individuals pertaining to Agenda Item 10, the 2044 Comprehensive Plan, and I have provided all these to council, legal, city clerk, and administration to be part of the record. We'll first start with online, Jeremy. If you could please state your full name, city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak as soon as you see the clock on the screen. Just one moment. Okay?
Good evening, elected officials. My name is Jeremy Elson. I live in Everett, Washington, in District 3, and Dawn, thank you for getting ahold of me a few, oh, a month ago. I have three ongoing concerns: novel bike lanes, youth safety, and the city's structural budget deficit. With my brief time, I'll focus tonight on bike lanes. On June 14th, I asked for an explanation about the new bike lanes and traffic calming devices, which are experimental, and I contend unsafe for both motorists and bicyclists alike. I emailed the government liaison for an update on June 28th and received a reply that a review of the master bike plan is on the list for a future council meeting, and she would let me know when it gets scheduled. To my knowledge, it has not been scheduled. In that email, I received a link to the city's website that attempted to explain the new advisory or edge lane on Elk Hill Drive, and an indication that temporary signs would be placed at each end of the lane to help people understand how to use it. These signs have never been installed. It also contained a video that educates what an advisory lane is. The video is from a pilot project, excuse me, a pilot project in Ottawa, Canada. The city's website has an easy-to-miss webpage on this particular edge lane road for Elk Hill Drive that still refers to the construction design and drawings but is not actually reflective of the as-built condition, which lacks the green bike lane painted configuration. The website also mentions that advisory lanes are used across North America and the world, but fails to mention that they are only experimental and under review by the Federal Highway Administration, and that the FHWA must approve them for experimental use. I have failed to find an application by the City of Everett to FHWA for approval to use this experimental treatment on Elk Hill Drive. I have grave concerns that the city's traffic engineer has allowed non-approved pavement markings and treatments to be installed. Further, the island medians on College Avenue, and also novel treatments which I know have already caused numerous accidents and damage, I would like confirmation that these are both approved by WashDOT and FHWA. I'd also like to know how many claims against the city have been submitted since these new bike facilities have been installed. I ask you, where is the communication strategy to help inform and educate community members about these new unorthodox and experimental bike facilities?
I need you to wrap up, Jeremy.
Since my comment, there have been just two Facebook posts, and yet the bike plan also has a whole set of recommendations for conducting ongoing education and outreach, and the city continues to implement new and unfamiliar bike facilities, most recently discussed in the July 30th Everett Herald article about new curb being installed on Madison. Still, no update from the city. When will you explain to the taxpayers the many unorthodox bicycle lane choices and calming devices? If you want safer biking, let's stop experimenting and start educating.
Your time is up, Jeremy.
I'll return next week to continue to my other important topics. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Willie in chambers. If you could please come to the podium, state your full name and city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak. I need you to wrap up, Jeremy.
Can you please turn on the mic there, on the right button, on the base of the, there we go, it's on now. Oh.
One more time, you see a light coming over it.
There we go.
You know, folks, I don't know why we have to go through this all the time, to come in here and beg you people to pay attention, but I'm not asking you, I'm demanding that our ordinance that the mayor and our chief of police is passing to abandon and make property illegal to be around be investigated. I think there's some backdoor stuff. I'll let you know, I've contacted a lawyer, and I'm purchasing this property, the Waits Motel. I'm offering a fair market value. I'm fighting the mayor now. We'll go to court. Because, see, what you are doing, she just talked about that she, "Thank you for the vote," to make that a better neighborhood. What about the Everett Motel down there? Did you know they had a murder there a couple of weeks ago? Did you know that they've had over 350 overdoses in that hotel? And we've got somebody here telling, to Emily down there, "You don't have a kitchen." Guess what? The Marriott doesn't have a kitchen. The Stand Hotel doesn't have a kitchen. And what about Motel 6 out on Highway 99? That's in the City of Everett? You've had more police calls to that motel in the Far West than five other hotels combined, and you're doing nothing. You're taking the property. I'm telling you, that mayor has some type of motive to give it to housing hope, somebody to build supportive housing. What Emily is doing is you're taking away a dream that a person has worked for, and you're doing it by what? Having the chief of police determine what is a violation of city ordinance? He's the one that condemned it along with her. There's been no hearings. She's had no due process. And you voted. Mayor, Paula, you're in government. You're in government. You're in government. You're in government. Are you in government, Mary? Yes. You people are government, everybody in this room is in government. And you vote for what? What did I hear the mayor say? "We want a beautiful Everett." She sat in a church on, up there on, seven years ago with everybody, and talked with the minister. "We're going to have compassion." You know what they've done? Let me tell you compassion. They gave money to Robert Smiley. He raped children and women in his camps. We have proof. Did you know the judges that you're getting to do your dirty work over here? I went to jail. Yes. I went to jail for calling someone a bitch who pepper sprayed me in front of two Everett police officers. You didn't prosecute them. Guess what? Did you know that it's illegal in this city to not follow the law? And your police is not following the law. You're supposed to arrest people. You know, people tell me I should come here and be nice to you. You want to know something? I've been elected out in my precinct, and just so you know, I'm a Republican, and they don't let me go to public meetings because I called them out. They go get restraining orders.
Your time is up, Mr. Russell.
Oh, now you're giving time, not her. Okay. It changes week to week, folks. I'm asking you to look into this process on the abandonment and really dig into it before you take the ladies home. And you're not going to be able to take it because we're putting together a group of citizens that's going to buy it. Thank you.
President Stonecifer, the other individual would like to wait till we get to Item 10.
Okay. That sounds great. Thank you. And we'll move now on to council comments and liaison reports, starting with Councilmember Ryan.
Great. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for being here tonight. Just a quick update for folks. I'll try and make it through quickly in my allotted amount of time. I attended the Glacier View Neighborhood Association on Monday, and it was just a really great turnout. The neighborhood's been working on rejuvenating and revitalizing their neighborhood associations. They had 22 people at the Milk House Coffee Company and had a great discussion about public safety, and so kudos to the group for their hard work. They do have a Facebook page and a mailing list and all sorts of outreach, so if you're in the Glacier View Neighborhood and you'd like to get involved, please reach out to either myself or just do a Facebook search, and you'll be able to get in touch with them. Their next meeting is on September 11th at 6:30, also at Milk House Coffee Company. And I also wanted to give a special shout-out for, under our consent agenda, item number five, authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with Snohomish County for $250,000 in the, in funding for downtown public restrooms. And in addition to my excitement for public health through public restrooms, I wanted to give a special shout-out to my very favorite Snohomish County Councilmember, Megan Dunn, who, this money is from her council project's allotment for ARPA dollars, and so she wanted to see, wanted to partner with the city to make sure that there was this public health option in the city for folks that are attending a festival or just needing to use the restroom as they hang out in our streets. So just wanted to give a shout-out to Councilmember Dunn for spearheading this and for her hard work on it. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwab?
Yes, I attended, along with Councilmember Tuie, the task force that the mayor put together for the project labor agreement, and we finished up basically the framework for what we're going to move forward with, the type of legislation in the form of ordinance that we're going to bring back to the, to this body. There was some discussion about, should we discuss the ordinance in committee, but I think the next step really is it's going to come before this group. So, and at some point, if I could just get the latest prediction of a start date for the Edgewater Creek Bridge improvement, when, just go ahead and give a prediction data on when we're going to close the boulevard there, that'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fosse?
Thank you, and I got to attend the Mother of All Garage Sales. This is one of my favorite events every year, and I have to bring my wagon with me because we usually find so much great stuff. So, well done to the neighborhood, Northwest, for putting that on. I followed it up by going to the Sounds of Africa Festival at the Everett Community College, and that was a really wonderful event. And then, this morning, I was also able to attend the Everett Housing Authority Madrona Square opening, grand opening, and for anyone that's not familiar with it, it's in the Delta Neighborhood, and there's over 100 units, but 67 of those units will be going to actually helping students who may be houseless and their families, and it's been a long time coming. They've been working with the neighborhood and having those, you know, information back and forth through the Neighborhood Association for quite some, some time, and I was able to speak at that event and relay how, you know, personal that was to me because not only was I one of those, you know, families when I was a child, but, you know, and I really sought that kind of sense of community, and we're going to be able to do this for our neighbors, so that's, it's quite a wonderful thing that we have coming forward, and I know Hawthorne Elementary is very excited for that project. So, thanks to the Everett Housing Authority and every partner that worked on this project to make it happen. And I also just wanted to finish with a huge welcome to Logan.
Thank you. Councilmembers Arlingo?
Well, I'll certainly chime in on welcoming Logan. That would be great to see him and his family there. Just one note from me tonight. Earlier on this evening, we had the meeting of the Built Environment Committee, a monthly meeting of the council members here, three of us, Councilmember Vogel, me, and Councilmember Schwab. The reason I bring that up is we'll have a presentation later on this evening about the update for the Comprehensive Plan that's coming up, and presentation of the alternatives and the process that's going to bring our community in to figure out how we're going to accommodate growth and manage all the trade-offs that come with that. I noted here, because that meeting is recorded and available, or will be available, on the Everett YouTube channel, that was about an hour long. We got into some detail that I don't think there'll be time to go into tonight, some questions and answers and that sort of thing, so if you're interested in that, in that, in that level of detail, certainly consult that recording. It was a very interesting and productive meeting, and we'll be getting a kind of a summary of that a little bit later on this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Vogel?
No thing to say today. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Tuie?
Just a couple of quick things. I wanted to thank Councilmember Schwab for bringing the update on the PLA and our process on that, which we're hoping to get wrapped up soon, and I also attended the grand opening of Madrona Square, and I have to say they're doing a great job of really building elements to create that community kind of a lifestyle for the families that are going to be living there, and so it was really fun to see that they're really well thought out, and they're really trying to think of everything, so really enjoyed seeing that. So, it was good. Good for our community.
Thank you. And I'll just, in response to our, one of our caller's requests about the bicycle plan, I don't believe I've had a request for bicycle plan update on our agenda, but it seems like it might be helpful because I don't recall having a briefing about the plan. It's pretty old, but I don't think we've done that since we have some new members. So, just, nothing urgent, but maybe in the next month or two, we could get kind of an update on the bicycle plan, what we've implemented, what the priorities are. I know we do see some projects come forward on that transportation improvement project list that we have to approve every year, but it'd be nice to see kind of where we're at, because I do see parts of the plan having been implemented, and it would be nice to get an update. That's all for me. Do we have an administrative update this evening?
Only to indicate, yes, we'd be happy to work with staff and Jennifer. We've talked briefly about bringing the master plan update forward, so I'll coordinate with her on her thoughts on timing. And then, to the residents, other questions regarding bike lanes tonight? We'll kind of pull those apart and get back to him and make sure he's got some answers to questions that he has felt he hasn't received yet.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you. We'll move to our city attorney, Mr. Rammerman. What do you have for us this evening?
No comments, but we are asking for an executive session to follow the meeting under 4230-110 Sub 1 Sub I to discuss an ongoing litigation matter, the last 10 minutes with no anticipated action to follow.
Thank you. And that brings us to our consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent items?
Councilmember Ryan moves approval of the seven consent agenda items.
Second. And any questions or comments? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Vice President Tuie?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes.
So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Logan Richard.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
Or a lawful permanent resident.
Or a lawful permanent resident.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the State of Washington.
Of the State of Washington.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Everett.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Everett.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer.
Perform the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you, and congratulations. And with that, Council President, no further comment. Thank you. And we'll now move on to our public comment time period. Angie, do we have anyone signed up to speak for public comment this evening?
We do. We have one individual online and two individuals in chambers. First, we did receive a couple of written comments, one from Bob and Jean Wool regarding the Waits Motel, and then 11 anonymous individuals pertaining to Agenda Item 10, the 2044 Comprehensive Plan, and I have provided all these to council, legal, city clerk, and administration to be part of the record. We'll first start with online, Jeremy. If you could please state your full name, city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak as soon as you see the clock on the screen. Just one moment. Okay?
Good evening, elected officials. My name is Jeremy Elson. I live in Everett, Washington, in District 3, and Dawn, thank you for getting ahold of me a few, about a month ago. I have three ongoing concerns: novel bike lanes, youth safety, and the city's structural budget deficit. With my brief time, I'll focus tonight on bike lanes. On June 14th, I asked for an explanation about the new bike lanes and traffic calming devices, which are experimental, and I contend unsafe for both motorists and bicyclists alike. I emailed the government liaison for an update on June 28th and received a reply that a review of the master bike plan is on the list for a future council meeting, and she would let me know when it gets scheduled. To my knowledge, it has not been scheduled. In that email, I received a link to the city's website that attempted to explain the new advisory or edge lane on Elk Hill Drive, and an indication that temporary signs would be placed at each end of the lane to help people understand how to use it. These signs have never been installed. It also contained a video that educates what an advisory lane is. The video is from a pilot project, excuse me, a pilot project in Ottawa, Canada. The city's website has an easy-to-miss webpage on this particular edge lane road for Elk Hill Drive that still refers to the construction design and drawings but is not actually reflective of the as-built condition, which lacks the green bike lane painted configuration. The website also mentions that advisory lanes are used across North America and the world, but fails to mention that they are only experimental and under review by the Federal Highway Administration, and that the FHWA must approve them for experimental use. I have failed to find an application by the City of Everett to FHWA for approval to use this experimental treatment on Elk Hill Drive. I have grave concerns that the city's traffic engineer has allowed non-approved pavement markings and treatments to be installed. Further, the island medians on College Avenue, and also novel treatments which I know have already caused numerous accidents and damage, I would like confirmation that these are both approved by WashDOT and FHWA. I'd also like to know how many claims against the city have been submitted since these new bike facilities have been installed. I ask you, where is the communication strategy to help inform and educate community members about these new unorthodox and experimental bike facilities?
I need you to wrap up, Jeremy.
Since my comment, there have been just two Facebook posts, and yet the bike plan also has a whole set of recommendations for conducting ongoing education and outreach, and the city continues to implement new and unfamiliar bike facilities, most recently discussed in the July 30th Everett Herald article about new curb being installed on Madison.
... search and you'll be able to get in touch with them. Their next meeting is on September 11th at 6:30, also at Milk House Coffee Company. And I also wanted to give a special shout out for, under our consent agenda, item number five, authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with Snohomish County for $250,000 in the, in funding for downtown public restrooms. And in addition to my excitement for public health through public restrooms, I wanted to give a special shout out to my very favorite Snohomish County Councilmember Megan Dunn, who this money is from her council project's allotment for ARPA dollars. And so she wanted to see, wanted to partner with the city to make sure that there was this public health option in the city for folks that are attending a festival or just needing to use the restroom as they hang out in our streets. So just wanted to give a shout out to Councilmember Dunn for spearheading this and for her hard work on it. So, thanks very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwab.
Yes, I attended, along with Councilmember Tuie, the task force that the mayor put together for the project labor agreement. And we finished up, basically, the framework for what we're going to move forward with the type of legislation in the form of ordinance that we're going to bring back to the, to this body. There was some discussion about, should we discuss the ordinance in committee? But I think the next step really is it's going to come before this group. And at some point, if I could just get the latest prediction of a start date for the Edgewater Creek Bridge Improvement, one, just go ahead and give a prediction data on when we're going to close the Boulevard there, that'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fosse.
Thank you. And I got to attend the mother of all garage sales. This is one of my favorite events every year, and I have to bring my wagon with me because we usually find so much great stuff. So, well done to the neighborhood northwest, putting that on. I followed it up by going to the Sounds of Africa Festival at the Everett Community College, and that was a really wonderful event. And then, this morning, I was also able to attend the Everett Housing Authority Madrona Square opening, grand opening. And for anyone that's not familiar with it, it's in the Delta Neighborhood. And there's over 100 units, but 67 of those units will be going to actually helping students who may be houseless and their families. And it's been a long time coming. They've been working with the neighborhood and having those, you know, information back and forth through the Neighborhood Association for quite some, some time. And I was able to speak at that event and relay how, you know, personal that was to me, because not only was I one of those, you know, families when I was a child, but, you know, and I, I really sought that kind of sense of community. And we're going to be able to do this for our neighbors, so that's, it's quite a wonderful thing that we have coming forward. And I know Hawthorne Elementary is very excited for that project. So, thanks to the Everett Housing Authority and every partner that worked on this project to, to make it happen. And I also just wanted to finish with a huge welcome to Logan.
Thank you. Councilmembers Zerlingo.
Well, I'll certainly chime in on welcoming Logan. That would be great to see him and his family there. Just one note from me tonight. Earlier on this evening, we had the meeting of the Built Environment Committee, a monthly meeting of the council members here, three of us, Councilmember Vogely, me, and Councilmember Schwab. The reason I bring that up is we'll have a presentation later on this evening about the update for the comprehensive plan that's coming up, and presentation of the alternatives and the process that's going to bring our community in to figure out how we're going to accommodate growth and manage all the trade-offs that come with that. I noted here, because that meeting is recorded and available, or will be available, on the Everett YouTube channel, that was about an hour long. We got into some detail that I don't think there'll be time to go into tonight, some questions and answers and that sort of thing. So, if you're interested in that, in that, in that level of detail, certainly consult that recording. It was a very interesting and productive meeting, and we'll be getting a kind of a summary of that a little bit later on this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Vogely.
No thing to say today. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Tuie.
Just a couple of quick things. I wanted to thank Councilmember Schwab for bringing the update on the PLA and our process on that, which we're hoping to get wrapped up soon. And I also attended the grand opening of Madrona Square, and I have to say, they're doing a great job of really building elements to create that community kind of a lifestyle for the families that are going to be living there. And so it was really fun to see that they're really well thought out, and they're really trying to think of everything. So, really enjoyed seeing that. So, it was good. Good for our community.
Thank you. And I'll just, in response to our, one of our caller's requests about the bicycle plan, I don't believe I've had a request for bicycle plan update on our agenda, but it seems like it might be helpful, because I don't recall having a briefing about the plan. It's pretty old, but I don't think we've done that since we have some new members. So, just, nothing urgent, but maybe in the next month or two, we could get kind of an update on the bicycle plan, what we've implemented, what the priorities are. I know we do see some projects come forward on that transportation improvement project list that we have to approve every year, but it'd be nice to see kind of where we're at, because I do see parts of the plan having been implemented, and it would be nice to get an update. That's all for me. Do we have an administrative update this evening?
Only to indicate, yes, we'd be happy to work with staff. And Jennifer, we've talked briefly about bringing the master plan update forward, so I'll coordinate with her on her thoughts on timing. And then, to the residents' other questions regarding bike lanes tonight, we'll kind of pull those apart and get back to him and make sure he's got some answers to questions that he has felt he hasn't received yet.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you. We'll move to our city attorney, Mr. Ramerman. What do you have for us this evening?
No comments, but we are asking for an executive session to follow the meeting under 4230-110-sub-1-sub-I, to discuss an ongoing litigation matter, the last 10 minutes, with no anticipated action to follow.
Thank you. And that brings us to our consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent items?
Councilmember Ryan moves approval of the seven consent agenda items.
Second. And any questions or comments? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmembers Zerlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Vice President Tuie?
Yes.
President Stonecypher?
Yes.
We have a proposed action item on our agenda. It's the first reading, so I'll read it into the record. Item eight is Council Bill 2308-39, first reading. Adopt an ordinance creating a special improvement project entitled Beverly Lake WQ retrofit, Fund 336, Program 040. Second and third and final reading will be on August 16th. Any questions or comments on this proposed action item? Next, we'll move to our action item. Item nine, Council Bill 2307-38, third and final reading. Adopt an ordinance changing the downtown business improvement area budget, amending ordinance number 358217 as amended. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmembers Zerlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Vice President Tuie?
Yes.
President Stonecypher?
Yes. And now our briefing item. Item 10, approve a resolution of the City of Everett, advancing the 2044 Comprehensive Plan periodic update, draft growth alternatives, and certain specific amendment requests to be studied in an environmental impact statement. And we have our long-range planning manager, Becky McCrery, here.
Welcome, Becky.
Thank you, Council President Stonecypher, and good evening to councilmembers and mayor. We are excited to be at the stage. Just in case, I'm, I'm reading the RCW about interruptions and procedure to handle that. We'll try this again.
There we go.
Yes, we're excited to be here and be at this stage. I'll talk about what phase we are in and how we're going to be moving forward, and then talk about next steps. You will be holding a public hearing on the 23rd, so that's a couple of weeks from now. So, there's some time for you to think about it and make sure that if you have anything in the interim before the public hearing that you need us to consider, let us know. So I will start out. I have with me tonight Karen Stewart. She's our environmental planner, and she will help go through the specific amendment requests with you. So, the Planning Commission held their public hearing in December, and maybe just a little bit about why we're doing this for maybe members of the audience that haven't been listening in until now. We are mandated, under the Growth Management Act, State Growth Management Act, to update our comprehensive plan and make sure that we can accommodate the growth that we expect to come in our new planning horizon 2044. So, this is our obligation that we share with many other counties and cities, especially the cities here in Snohomish County. And so, this is our obligation under the Growth Management Act. So, once the council does complete the alternatives that they would like to see move forward and pass your resolution, that will launch us right into Phase Three of the project. All throughout Phase Two, we engage with the public, and we will continue to do that during Phase Three, but Phase Three is more of a, we're going to be doing our study on the growth alternatives and the specific amendment requests. So, there might be periods of time where we're back doing our work, but we're still working on the project, and we'll keep the community engaged. Once we get that done and we move into Phase Four, that's your opportunity to take a look at impacts from different growth components, and it will be your chance to consider a preferred alternative for the community. So, I'm going to start out, we have covered this, but it's been a little while, and there's been some updates, so I want to just cover the way that we approached creating our growth alternatives. So, we establish some growth geographies, different places, maybe different growth. Those are Metro Everett, and then, we call it a frame or a transition area, but it would be on the edges of the boundary of Metro Everett, is there places where we might be able to expand some growth. The light rail stations, it'll be this planning period that you actually will see light rail come to Everett. So, this is a real important time to acknowledge that and to get some plans in place for when that occurs. Then, the urban corridors, which are probably obvious, but they're Broadway, they're Rucker and Evergreen Way, Everett Mallway, and then in the Silver Lake area, 19th. These are the high-intensity areas, and they currently do allow for high-intensity development there. It's just that Everett hasn't seen those materialize quite yet. But that's currently what they're planned for. And then, we calling the frontage frames, which is the area behind those urban corridors. And we can consider those more of transition areas, so they'll serve as transition to the neighborhood residential areas. So, more intense, little less intense, and then the neighborhoods was our approach. Then we're taking a look at connectors, and these are roads where there's a little bit more improvement, they're wider, that may be able to absorb some of the more growth. And so, that's another growth area that we're taking a look at. You will see the Planning Commission has added the West Muckelteal Boulevard west of Glenwood, and I'll show this on a map here in just a second. And then, all of the other areas, which we call our neighborhood residential. That's what it looks like graphically. The urban corridors are the dark green, also the intensity in the Metro Everett. The light rail stations are outlined in a half-mile radius, and we still don't know the exact locations, but we're in, working with Sound Transit now to come up with those, those station locations. The connectors are shown in the light, the lighter blue. Residential areas are more the yellow, and then, kind of those pink areas are employment, employment areas. It doesn't show on the legend there, but that's where we would see more of the industrial-type employment. I also wanted to mention that in the high-intensity areas, the high-rise or the urban corridors, I should say, that's also employment. So, those are mixed-use stacked zoning-type areas. I think we introduced this last time too, but these are housing typologies, and these are meant to identify intensity of housing development. Because as part of our work in updating this, the comprehensive plan, we have to show that, not only do we have to show housing unit capacity, but we have to show the right housing unit capacity. In other words, the right housing units for the right income levels. We are responsible, and then, in that way, it's new this year. House Bill 1220 is requiring us to do that. So, graphically, it's showing our single-family neighborhoods, which with House Bill 1110, the middle housing bill, that's probably not a designation that will, will continue. The neighborhood residential really does serve as that middle housing typology. Then you go into the low-rise, which is your three or four-story apartment buildings or condominiums, mid-rise, which is up to that seven floors, and I think that's what Everett has seen for the most part, which is, you know, five over one or five over two. And then the high-rise, which we do allow, especially in the downtown, could go up to 25 floors, but at least to over eight floors. And that represents development that would require some steel construction or some other type of construction that's much more expensive than that, that wood-type construction.
Becky, on that, how far away are we from that cross-laminated timber being allowed in that kind of construction? Or is there some level that, that allows it to go up without steel construction?
That's a very good question, and I would like for us to, to check into that.
Okay.
And we can bring some information back to you at the public hearing, but yeah.
That'd be great.
That's important.
Yeah, thank you.
I won't go over this, but too much in detail, but this kind of shows you the types of housing that would be considered in these different housing typologies. So, I'll stop there before I start into the alternatives and see if there were any questions about the information so far.
Councilmember Vogely.
It's a comment. I just want to say thank you. So, I heard this earlier in our committee meeting, and I didn't understand it, but I'm understanding it better this time. So, just as a note of encouragement to all of those other folks out there that have no idea what's going on right now, watch it a second time.
Okay, so, the alternatives. We've developed three alternatives using those geographies, along with the housing types, to identify where we might put new or create new housing capacity. Alternative one is what we call a current plans extended, and we use this alternative as a baseline for which we would evaluate alternatives two and three. It might be obvious, but alternative one doesn't meet our growth targets the way we're supposed to in, in, under GMA. We do have a few increases to do, or amendments to do, to meet our 2035 targets, and also by acknowledging the light rail stations. But you can see that it only, we only have room for about 21,000 housing units. Our target is 38,000, so there's a difference of 17,000 housing units that's needed. So, the pattern is growth along the urban corridors, single-family would stay virtually the same, or it does stay the same in this scenario. And again, it's just used as a baseline for which we would study the other growth alternatives. So, alternative two takes a concentrated growth approach, similar to what the current plans extended, is only we've expanded or showing it being expanded a bit. So, the Metro Everett and the urban corridors would be, again, the high-rise. In North Everett and generally in, along the other urban corridors, we've expanded, like in Broadway north, it's only half a block that it's zoned for the mixed-use and the higher heights. So, we've expanded that to include one full block, to see if that helps development in any way. Then, next to that, the transition areas or the urban corridor frames, we're showing that as more of a mid-rise. So, that's an up to seven stories in those areas. And that, so we've identified places next to the urban corridors, acknowledging the light rail stations again, but it just does take that concentrated approach growth pattern. Want to also acknowledge that it does not address the middle housing. The House Bill 1110 passed the legislature as we were already pretty far down the road in developing this alternative. Nonetheless, it does allow us to study that heavy concentration. So, that component itself will be able to inform what kind of impacts would be from an intense development being concentrated. We are going to do something with the map to acknowledge that middle housing, because we will be required to have middle housing in at least 75% of the city's lots, and that is not acknowledged here in alternative one. I'm sorry, alternative two. That does, however, allow us to meet our 2044 growth targets. Alternative three is that other extreme and does acknowledge the middle housing in a very large way, a very intense way. It increases the capacity for what we need in 2044. And instead of the frames around the urban corridors being mid-rise, they would be more low-rise. So, then you're starting to get a little bit less intense next to those urban corridors. Then also in this alternative, that is not in alternative one or two, is the idea of putting some growth along those connector streets. So, you see that Madison, 52nd, up there, 19th Street, those wider streets, and then the Planning Commission did add a connector on West Muckelteal Boulevard there. You can see that north, or west of Glenwood. So, those are showing as more of those three, four-story-type buildings along those connectors. So, one thing I wanted to make sure that, that council knows, as you're looking at these and considering which alternatives to move forward, is we want to make sure that we have all of the components that you think you want, that you may want to study. Anything that you think you might want to consider as we go through to the preferred alternative, so that we can get it in this environmental analysis. It's much easier to do it now with the rest of the components than it would be to do it near the end of the process, which would, could cause us some delay. And I, I would say that it can't be done, but it would be very difficult. So, if there's thinking in your mind about certain areas or, or certain components that aren't shown, then we would want you to indicate that at this point in the process.
Councilmember Ryan, then Councilmember Fosse.
Thank you. Becky, a few, I'm zoomed in on my laptop here too, but in the very northwest corner, it appears to be a little stretch that's white, kind of along the bluff there. Can you explain more about that?
I think it's the marsh, but we'll confirm that, so it's not a, we wouldn't put any housing there.
Yeah, that would make sense, okay.
That's a good question, because we're looking at a flat map. There's a lot of areas with geography, with spaces that aren't developable, so that's a good point.
Sure, yeah, I would be a little bit concerned with just increased density along the bluff, because I know it's eroding over time, as we've seen it, like Grand Avenue Park and whatnot. So, so I thought maybe that was just a protective barrier for climate change, actually. So, thanks.
Councilmember Fosse.
So, are you marking where there is a non-developmental portions? Because I see the agricultural and park, but I know that there's upland, wetlands in the northeast side that is not developable.
They're not shown on these particular maps, but they are part of the analysis. When we look and see how many buildable lands there are in a certain area, we would remove those from being considered, so that we know what we have in terms of unit count capacity.
Okay. And the clarification that you gave about the, the neighborhood residential, the new one, so are we, is that, I guess going forward, are we anticipating that that would be shown here as it is in the, the third altern, or the, what is the, yeah, the third alternative?
Yes, this is the third alternative, and it's showing the places that showed single-family in alternative two, they're showing more the middle housing in alternative three.
But, alternative two will also be reflective of those changes, technically?
It will not.
So, it'll be different?
But you're, you're not picking one or the other alternative, you're just looking at components to study impacts. So, in the end, when you pick the preferred alternative, which should be components of both of these, most likely, the middle housing will be part of that. We're showing every single, single-family parcel allowing middle housing on, that's the extreme. We do have some local option to have only 75% of the lots have middle housing. It will be up to the council to decide how that works. So, it is confusing on alternative two, because it doesn't show any middle housing. But we do feel like studying the extreme concentration would be a bookend that we would want to understand impacts.
Would we not also look at then the urban corridor frame of having mid-rise there as well, if we were studying that?
Say that again.
Because isn't on this, you have the low-rise along the corridor frame?
Right. And then we have the mid-rise in the concentrated. So, we're intensifying the concentration in alternative two and dispersing the growth more in three.
How far out does that frame go?
That's a great question. We had that during the Built Environment Committee. In your packet, there is the table that talks about the geographies, and it talks about generally the distance from the frame, or from the corridor, how far. We are refining that now by the parcel level and creating a story map that we will have on the website, so folks can go in and look at their property and see where they are in each one of the alternatives.
Okay. It seems like that would be a pretty
Yes.
big, like, I don't know, a cutoff, going from the high-rise then to the low-rise. It just seems like it would be more graduated in my mind, but, especially along those corridors, because constantly from my neighbors, that's what I'm always hearing about. That's where they're wanting a lot of that, that growth, is to look at that.
More graduated.
So, yeah.
Again, these are the extreme bookends to help us understand impacts.
Vice President Tuie, and then Councilmember Zerlingo.
Yeah, thanks, Becky. So, one of the questions that I get a lot asked about is, you know, how are we going to deal with the traffic and the infrastructure, and how are we going to layer all of our, all the other amenities that we provide our community? So, is that part of the impact study on these different plans?
Yes, that's a wonderful question. Yes, we will be studying all of those components.
Okay.
We're updating the transportation network, so we'll be evaluating all of those things in relationship to the alternatives.
Okay.
So, you're dispersing the growth, do you need a fire station somewhere else?
Exactly.
Do you need a road somewhere else?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Good, okay, good. Just want to make sure.
Yeah. Councilmembers Zerlingo.
Becky, you did a good job of setting out part of the
Becky, you did a good job of setting out part of the mandates in this. I guess I want to cover both ends of that in the interest of getting as good a feedback as we can from our community members because, I mean, I certainly hear from, from some of our community, especially those who bought and or built single-family housing, and that's what they expected, that's what they bought, they expected or hope for it to stay that way permanently. And as our city grows and with state mandates and the Growth Management Act that comes from, I think, the early nineties, that's not really a choice that's open to us. So I'll happily listen to that feedback. But, but on my and our responsibility is accommodating some of this growth. So I guess I'll go, to a degree, to the other end of that and say that, as has been brought up here a couple of times already, I would really appreciate when we get community feedback that we look, that we understand and we get from feedback in terms of what the priorities are. Because we're going to be making trade-offs where, especially the two examples you talked about, the concentrated growth and the dispersed growth. They're, they are good alternatives to look at as the extremes, to think about what it means for traffic and transit and walkability and bikeability and wheelability and all that. How do those things trade off? Because none of these things are without disadvantages. So I would certainly encourage people to view these meetings, ask questions, and come to us with comparisons and priorities. Which things are most important? Which things will you trade? How much do you care about bus service or traffic or parking versus heights and light and views and bluff stability and all those sorts of things? So thank you for that, and I'll just try to ask our community members to, when you come to us, please, please come with some sense of that or at least be prepared to answer questions so that we can make these trade-offs.
Yes, and another point you made at the committee was that, you know, this is a twenty-year plan, and so we create the capacity, but that doesn't mean it happens overnight or it even happens, but we're mandated to create the circumstances.
Yeah, that's a good point. We look back at the past decade. We haven't seen that kind of growth actually materialize. But as you said, some of these things depend on what works financially and physically, and we'll get some key in that with respect to the environmental studies. But some of it will depend on things that we, we can't know at this stage.
Becky, when they, when we kind of embark on this, as we all know, we haven't really met our growth targets. So are they assuming, like, does it build on our last growth target? So we're kind of having to make up for lost opportunities plus move forward?
I think the way that it works, or I know the way that it works, is it's just about capacity. So whether we actually have that many housing units in 2035 or not isn't as important as making sure that the capacity is there to accommodate if, if the need arises. That's still the prediction that we're going to grow by this much and we have to accommodate this much. So again, for 2044, we do have a slight deficit in capacity for 2035 because we're not realizing the densities that we're zoned for. So I hope I'm explaining it right.
So the resetting of the new targets doesn't take into account, like, okay, this is where everyone is at now. Now let's look at where, what we think is going to happen and what has happened in the past.
Right, it's, it's about capacity, not.
Making sure that we have the zoning to accommodate whether the development comes our way or not is another question.
Happens at the regional level, and then it.
Right, and the problem we have is that then we create zoning, we make zoning decisions that allow for, frankly, suboptimal additional housing in our community. And because that's easier and cheaper to do, then we get the suboptimal, and yet we don't get the optimal density. So the dispersed growth is kind of what we've tried to do over the past twenty years since I've been on the city council, and then we don't get it. So we just get this suboptimal, you know, additional housing. We don't ever get the actual density of growth. And we just keep jamming housing or making opportunities for housing in areas that really just aren't the best for the community from a transportation perspective primarily and also from just other public amenities that you want to add in. So it's better to have a park in an area where there's a lot more density, so more people can use it, it makes it more viable. So, so that's kind of a problem that I think we're experiencing. The other question I have, it's a little confusing because Alternative One doesn't meet our targets. Alternative Two doesn't meet any of the targets because we're not getting the middle housing in. And so it feels like we're kind of like stuck with this Alternative Three, which is like the, the maximum, you know, kind of a, an extreme version of growth. So explain for me and for the public who are listening how that, how the process works once we study these things. How do we come back then and take those components to come up with a plan that is workable and who's doing that work?
Yeah, I, I wanted to make one comment from your first comments in that light rail will change things in Everett, and that will come in this planning period. So that may spur more of the development that we're looking for as it gets closer to being here.
Yeah, true, thank you.
Alternative Two does meet our growth target. It doesn't, but it just doesn't acknowledge the middle housing component that we have to have. So instead of having middle housing dispersed, it's putting the density into the frames and the high-rise areas. So just to, we're going to have to do something with this map for the public to understand. But we're using Alternative Two to just study an extreme concentration situation as a bookend on this side. Because then in 2034, you have to update for 2054. I mean, it's just an incremental growth. So we will acknowledge that some middle housing has to occur under this scenario. There's still a lot of local choices about middle housing that the city can make to be more intense or aggressive about it or be more sprinkly about it. I say that's a technical term there.
It works for me.
So I, I hope that explains what we're trying to do here. And this just has middle housing as, as an extreme again.
Okay, and then the last time Director Stevens-Watcher was here, he indicated that we needed housing, or maybe it was you, that we needed the upper-end housing or kind of the high inca- I don't know what you call it, high-income housing. And so our, is, which of these scenarios would help us kind of understand how that might fit into our plan?
Yeah, that's kind of the next phase because we have to take those typologies, the high-rises, and we have growth targets, housing units by income level. So for Everett does need more high-end housing and then the low, very low. And the high-end housing types would be your high-rise condominiums. Because there isn't a lot of room for new single-family development because that's the other housing type for typical of that.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, okay.
Yeah.
Because we're not going to jam those in. All right, that's helpful, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Vogli.
I think it's more of a comment again. And as I was listening to everybody get questions from their constituents, I was like, what are they asking me? Why am I not getting these questions? And, and I do, I'm sure. But I think a big question that comes at me is, what is the vision? And these are just, I see us making many decisions that are almost, I know this is forward-thinking, forward-moving, but it's like past thought, you know? So the vision of the city, we want it vibrant, we want high income, we want affordable. And in order to get that, we need not just the housing because I'm all for build it, just build the housing, allow it. But a beautiful and, you know, bookstores and this and that downtown. And I know we're thinking about that and talking about that at the committee meeting like next week. But I'm not hearing a, an Everett vision. And so I just want to, I guess, put that on all of our radars because I think that might just be a necessary piece to this puzzle.
Yeah, I, I agree, Councilmember Vogli, that, that vision, I think, is, is that we have housing for everybody at all income levels, at all price points throughout the city, right? Not just in one neighborhood, but in all neighborhoods that we have that upper-end housing, we have low-income housing, we have family housing, affordable housing. We have condominiums and people trying to downsize and people trying to, you know? So that is in our visions, that is in a lot of the mayoral directives around housing for all and quality of life. And so our team of staff have been working towards those visions. And I think as council meets annually to do kind of council priorities and visioning, that's where we incorporate council visioning into that. I certainly, I, I, it should always be a joint vision. But I, I do believe that we are all on the same page of, of our housing vision, which is that we have housing available to everybody in the city that lives here and needs housing and everyone that is coming here. And our team will continue to work towards that while our planning team have to accommodate all of the processes to update the comp plan. And that's just a lot of planning work, the vision comes then from us.
Just, just a chart view of the alternatives. And then kind of comparing. Wanted to just give some high-level concepts from the public that we've been getting. It's, it's been mixed. Housing is always a topic, no matter what side that you're on. We've heard, especially in the south end, about displacement and gentrification, especially around the light rail station areas. And there is a, a common theme about wanting more housing choices. So even if you like your single-family neighborhood, just having more choices. And to make sure that, as you talked about, Councilmember Vogli, that the amenities are there, that it's a walkable place and that parks are very important. As you get more and more people, you need to have places for, for people to enjoy their community. And our next steps is, I mentioned, we're going to continue to have community outreach. We're going to be diving into our environmental review and technical analysis. And of course, we'll be keeping Planning Commission and council up to date along the way. And if there's no other questions, I'll move on to have Karen talk about the specific amendments.
Becky, will you remind me, when does our comprehensive plan have to be updated and provided to the state of Washington?
The deadline is December 30th of 2024.
Thank you.
Just to mention too, if there's anything that you think about between now and the public hearing, please let us know and we can try to address that at your, at your hearing.
Okay, I will be describing what we're calling specific amendment requests. And just by way of quick background, some of you might remember the annual docket process. We didn't do a docket last year. And so what we're doing is we, we have been collecting information from folks, what they would like to do with their property that would necessitate a change to the comprehensive plan or to zoning. So for 2022, we collected that information. And then this year, we had an actual application submittal of docket items. So, and then we asked people to think about it next year if they could anticipate what they would like. So essentially, three years are now combined in the specific amendment request that we're bringing forward tonight. There are nine applications that were submitted, and we've done our initial staff review. And I'll show you where we are. There is the.
Go one more.
Oops, okay. So here we are in the process. We're at the second to the left white square. And so the Planning Commission held several meetings and came up with a recommendation on these nine applications. And so tonight now, we're with you to begin briefing you about the applications. And then this is a summary chart. I thought I'd start out with this. And then in your staff memorandum, there are details for each of these nine applications. But I'll start at a high-level summary, and then we can drill down of which of these nine you want us to explain a little bit more about. So the Clark application is an example of, an application to modify the heights for a couple of blocks along Broadway that are adjacent to Metro Everett. And this was something that, as you've heard from Becky's presentation, Alternatives Two and Three, as proposed, are talking about, I believe, a high-rise along Broadway. So we're already going to be evaluating that in the comprehensive plan. So we told this applicant that their requested outcome is already going to be addressed. So we don't have to do anything independent of, of what we're already planning on doing. And then there are three other rezone applications that have been received here that are on this graphic. So the Haram Mata, that's for an up-zone along McDougall. And another rezone application from Marston Glavets is down in the Holly neighborhood for an up-zone. And then Mize also submitted a rezone to up-zone and perhaps allow a mixed-use building with retail on the lower level. But that would necessitate a change to the comprehensive plan. And that proposal is along East Marine, or East Marine View Drive. So Clark, Haram Mata, Marston Glavets, and Mize. So four of the nine applications we presented to the Planning Commission, and they concurred with staff recommendation to let the applicants know we will be planning on addressing those already in the environmental review for the comp plan update. So they did, just needed to follow the process and no additional application needed, assuming that the city council agrees. Now, three other applications that are listed on this chart, Cunningham Hall et al. and Port of Everett. I'll group those three together because the Planning Commission has agreed with staff that these should be advanced for further analysis in the environmental impact statement as part of the update of the comprehensive plan. So right now, they're not a focus in either Alternatives One, Two, or Three. So for these three, we would have to add that into the analysis. Then that leaves two of the nine applications that I haven't talked about yet. The first is an application from the Everett Housing Authority. And although they, they have generalized what they're asking for, the specific request really is made for their ongoing work for the park, proposed park district, which is up in North Everett. And that is subject to an ongoing development review process that perhaps you've already been briefed on. You'll be hearing more about it over this next year. The applicant is already doing, separate from this process, a site-specific environmental impact statement. Their particular request is focused on, there's a chart or a table within our existing comp plan that limits the height for their zoning to a maximum of, I believe, ten store. to a maximum of, I believe, 10 stories or perhaps 12 stories.
Ten.
They ten. And so the um Everett Housing Authority would like to modify that to go up to 15 stories. So this um request is something that will have to be addressed in the development agreement um that is already under discussion. So the Planning Commission concurred with staff's recommendation that this application actually be set into, set aside from the comprehensive plan EIS study and keep following the ongoing um planned development overlay process, which um is similar to some other large master planned areas like Waterfront Place, Riverfront, um that 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 seems like the most uh direct vehicle to move them along um instead of waiting for the comprehensive plan to be amended at the end of December 2024. So that's, the Planning Commission recommendation is to not include that request in the EIS periodic update.
Karen, remind me, um, I it's been a while since we've done a plan development overlay. That, in that process, that housing, that height restriction would be addressed then as kind of like it almost becomes like its own separate little zone.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
So um so I've described now quickly in a summary form, eight of the nine. The last one that I would like to quickly summarize is the Koenig uh application. And this one uh we're proposing to handle. Um, and I will read from our staff report here. Based on staff's initial review, two of the requested development regulation changes related to middle housing definition and height limit will likely be consistent with the criteria in our code as well as the comprehensive plan. The the other two uh requested changes related to critical areas uh described in the application as environmental environmentally sensitive areas and right of way standards will likely not be consistent. The presence of critical areas somewhere on a lot does not have a si- uh sufficient nexus to prohibit development on portions of the lot that do not contain critical areas or their buffers. Most city rights of way were constructed before the latest design standards were enacted, prohibiting development in most areas currently designated single family in the comprehensive plan would likely not be consistent with state law. City staff do review all development proposals for adequacy of infrastructure and do require improvements or deny development applications as appropriate. So the Planning Commission recommendation is that the entire application, Koenig application, including the supporting materials and regulatory provisions, be considered as comments through the comprehensive plan periodic update process. So that's a high level um summary of the the nine applications. And I'd be happy to um uh examine any one of these by referencing our staff review if you have particular questions about any one of these.
Any questions? I, if you could get summarize the Koenig application, I guess I'm not familiar with what they asked and maybe I missed that in my materials. What was their specific request?
So there were multi-faceted parts to it, so um.
Is this Dave Koenig?
This is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. So first, um, I'll address the proposed uh policies related to middle housing. So um, and you see there's full four bulleted items there, but in general relating to middle housing. Looking at the uh design, potential adoption of design standards um to address the uh transition from single family housing with a type of middle housing um next door is um the proposal is have some design standards. And then the second bullet um talks what those design standards would be addressing. Um, third one talks about how this is something that staff um will need to take time, not only coming up with the development standards, but applying them consistently um throughout their work. And then the fourth one would be sort of a uh evaluation of that.
Yeah, that's great.
And then um the second uh overall component here of the middle housing um application uh here, it relates to regulations, so changing um things in our municipal code. And the first one, as I said earlier, would be consistent, obviously, adopting the RCW definition of middle middle housing. Um, and then uh protecting environmentally sensitive areas, which we do through our critical area regulations already, citywide. But the proposal, the proposed application is talking about um parcels that have critical areas and their buffers, perhaps um really restricting whether or not middle housing would be allowed at all there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the third bullet um talking about the adequate infrastructure um as we densify. And um and the fourth one is was relating to public right of way. Um, and then um the, oh, I didn't talk about this one. Um, having a maximum height of uh two stories or 28 feet um in the existing many parcels that are over one and or two throughout the city. Um, and 28 feet uh would really restrict many types of middle housing. Um, so. And then was there anything else, Becky? So here, uh, staff comments, which I kind of already reviewed that. Um, and was there something after that?
The um, I think Yorick's mentioned before that we will be addressing middle housing in this periodic update. So we will be going through policies and we will be going through regulations based on the, what we can and can't do under the new state provisions.
Mm-hmm, right. So on the design standards piece, I think that, you know, Mr. Koenig makes a really important point. And this is, it essentially, whenever you have infill that people are unhappy about, it really has to do with bad design. And so how will we be thinking about those design standards um as we move forward? Because it's a critical part of making everyone happier with um increasing density.
Right, we've had a session with the Planning Commission to talk about that because anything that you require of middle housing, you have to require for single family as well. So um, that's something that we're taking a look at and talking with the Planning Commission and maybe it'd be a a good time to have a working session with the the council as well.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful. We haven't done that for a very long time. But, you know, I know at the ti- uh many years ago, a decade or so ago, we did uh have a lot of dialogue with developers. And what we learned at that time, I'm assuming it remains the same, but it'd be nice to test it, is just that if they know, if you can be a little, not vague, but more um prescriptive, then they know what they're expected, what's expected of them. And it really um helps uh the development community figure out how to fit within there and make people um happy with the outcome and not get a bunch of back and forth of, oh yeah, that's not really quite what we had in mind. So it'll be interesting for us to think about that.
President, oh, President Stonecifer, I just wanted to add, uh, if if uh we can probably send the link around from the Planning Commission meeting where they discussed this at at length. And there was a strong uh agreement from the council that um they had concerns with the the, some of the recommendations from uh Koenig. And uh that because it would be prescriptive. And you, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it'd be prescriptive on how we uh do design standards for all housing and that we would get pushback from everybody. That it would be very um hard to do housing overall because you have to treat middle housing the same as single family housing. And and so I think that there are some challenges. And I, the team is going to do their best to kind of accommodate these new regulations from the state because we all support uh the need for this increased density. But I I I think that treating middle housing differently is going to be very problematic moving forward in a way that it probably wasn't a decade ago. And so um I I it's it's going to be interesting. Uh, but I I think a good background will be watching the discussions as these were uh presented to the Planning Commission. Um, as you'll see a little bit of the the dialogue that they had as well.
Well, and I'm not thinking just of middle housing. I think more generally, because there's a lot of single family residential housing that gets put in neighborhoods that makes people mad because it also has bad design. So I think, you know, just thinking sort of globally around what, you know, how we should be thinking about that. I'm hoping there are other communities that are ahead of us on this and we can copy, copy and paste.
I think, I think we've, the mayor's correct. But I think we're ta- kind of taking the approach that maybe there's some basic objective standards that could apply that aren't onerous um to help make good design.
Yeah. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. My first question's uh an out of curiosity question. Out of curiosity, how many uh amendments were reviewed in total, amendment requests?
Nine, except the one around the port had.
Forty, forty-four property owners.
We can bind them.
So it's, so the uh Planning Commission reviewed just these nine? Or were, did they review others and?
No, there wasn't any other.
We brought all of them forward.
Okay, thank you. And then speaking of, um, uh, for the Hall et al., um amendment requesting to remove the port compatibility overlay and then the ports' request to expand the port compatibility overlay. Can you share a little bit more about the different elements of those two requests and just where the conflict in those requests lies?
Um, yes, so the the port compatibility overlay was adopted in 2020. And so that is on a map that's in the zoning code. Um, it has some regulations around that. And so the neighbors, the neighborhood up there, the people that are in that overlay, um submitted an application to remove it. Um, and there's some history there that we can bring back more detail about. Um, and so I think the port, I'm probably not giving a lot of detail, but the port and is working with the neighbors right now on that issue. Um, and and we can just give you some more background at the public hearing too about that because we did have a lot of folks show up for the public hearing at the Planning Commission. The port expansion has to do with the freight um corridor and is not talking about any specific properties. But except along the corridor, they want to be notified of development applications and or um improvements to roadways because they have freight that um gets taken off by trucks and has a route. And um so so the two proposals don't really have anything to do with each other. Um, but the port and the neighborhood are working together to maybe come to some resolution before these get to the end of this process. But we will provide some more detail for you at the hearing.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I've been uh speaking with the neighbors and the ports. I'm familiar with it for sure. Um, yeah, they they definitely have reached out to me a number of times and I've met with them and talked more about it, so I'm uh familiar with the issue. Um, I am curious about the uh port compatibility overlay. Um, because part of it also overlays with the Navy base compatibility overlay.
They're, they're two separate overlays. It's a little confusing in the zoning code and I think we we recognize that now. But they are two separate overlays.
So they, so they.
Even though they're on the same map.
Are they, are there properties where a property would have both?
No.
Okay.
And I can confirm that with, yes, Laura.
Right, okay, great. All right, that solves my question. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilmember Schwab.
Yeah, a ju- a comment here. It, basically, our next action is going to be, we're going to take these options for environmental impact studies, is that correct?
Correct.
So out of that, then staff is going to review it? And then are we going to have new um options to choose from based on that?
What we will be doing is, once we finish the review, the environmental analysis, is that we will bring those results to you. And out of those results, then the staff will be working with Planning Commission and the council on picking what we will call the preferred alternative, which, you know, we'll go through, which perform the best, which makes the more sense. And you will develop that preferred alternative.
I'm just thinking that perhaps that might be even a workshop time for the council.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
To to go through that. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, that sounds like a good plan. We need a lot of time for that. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that all of your information?
That's it.
Okay, perfect. We will see you back at the public hearing.
Yes.
Uh, that brings us to the end of our agenda.
President Stonecifer, we have one public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so Laura, if you would like to come to the podium, then please state your name and city residence. You have three minutes to speak.
Great, thank you, uh, council members, mayor. Um, Laura Gurley, Port Staff, very astute, um, Councilmember Ryan, um, on identifying that there are two sort of related, but um, items on the on the docket. So we have had quite a lot of interaction at the Planning Commission meetings with the um concerned neighbors about the port compatibility area. Um, our CEO has committed to working with Port Staff on alternative language to try to come to um a a new draft that clarifies what the whole purpose of the PCA is so that then we can go to the neighbors and talk with them and everybody gets to come to an agreement. Um, obviously, if elimination of the PCA went through, the freight corridor being expanded into it, I don't know how that could happen. So they are sort of related in that way. Um, but I definitely want to explain why this is so important to the port because um when a big new development is going to happen that is within that zone, um, say, you know, 10 stories of assisted living, which was proposed at one point several years ago on a property overlooking the port. Um, we would just like the opportunity to talk with the applicant, make suggest, well, maybe not directly, but make suggestions to staff about, you're building something overlooking the port, you might want to consider some things to make your building, um, you know, have some specific features uh so that it's not experiencing things like noise and dust and things that are just a a fact of life of being next to a port. Same thing with the freight corridor. Um, there is a proposal right now on the corner of uh Rucker and Pacific that is several hun- well, 240 some odd, um, it's a mixed use um uh building. And if it gets built the way it's proposed right now, we will never have an opportunity to increase turn radiuses on that um corner, which could definitely affect how freight can move down the freight corridor. Um, so we just, again, want that opportunity to be notified, have some constructive dialogue with an applicant about what we might be able to come together on working through the city. So there there is a, there's more meat on the bones than, um, you know, just having a a line on a map. There's reasons why we um, we just want to participate in uh the the planning, the active planning for um for the areas that it are impacted by and impact the port. So, thank you.
That's helpful context. Thank you. Councilmember Ryan.
Yes, thank you. And I would add additional context as well. Uh, thank you to the port for putting together a very handy one pager about uh what is a port compatibility area and what it means and what it doesn't mean. Um, and they were very quick to uh turn that around when I made a very respectful request. So I thank you for that. Uh, and folks are more than welcome to reach out to myself or to the port to get that if they have questions about it. they have questions about it. And then also, I did review the letter that the port had sent with regards to the project that's going in on Pacific and Rucker, and would just encourage planning staff to take that into consideration moving forward with the next steps for the, the development that's proposed for that corner, just to make sure that we're not inhibiting future growth of the port and, and economic success of the region. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, that does bring us to the end of our agenda, I believe, and we have an executive session, so we will recess to executive session for 10 minutes with no anticipated announcement.